Your Council President Lake here. Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Bondahar?
Here.
Ms. Longnecker?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
We also have Anna Mary and April present.
Very good. We have a quorum, everyone in attendance. That's wonderful. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the prior meeting's minutes. Those were sent out to you in advance. Is there a motion to approve those?
I move.
Mr. Shepherd, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Longnecker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. I am hoping that our friend from the Ohio Attorney General's office, Mr. Dale Vitale, is going to be here momentarily. I don't know otherwise, but in light of that, I think we'll move ahead because we want to keep this meeting moving along, and we're going to move up the report of the city council president to proceed today, the report of the financial supervisor. She'll be able to give us more information and context that will then help us to understand the reports that we received from Anna Mary and April. So, I'd like to ask Donna to go ahead and...
Thank you. So, in the financial recovery plan, there were monies in that plan to purchase three pieces of equipment, and those are a Ford, 2018 Ford Explorer patrol vehicle, as well as a new paramedic unit, and a dump truck for public works. Initially, there was not a problem with the police cruiser. Whenever I get these ordinances, my first call is always to Anna Mary or to April to make sure that they fall within the financial recovery plan, and that one was fine. We did pass that at the council meeting without any changes. The paramedic unit, there was sufficient funding in the financial recovery plan to purchase that, so we went ahead and proceeded with that. There was some question as to whether that was a 2018 or a 2017, and at the time, they were negotiating for the 2017. By the time we came to an agreement for the lease purchase, they were no longer available, so it is a 2018.
Sorry, it was a paramedic what?
Paramedic unit, the whole paramedic unit, and outfitted with all the equipment.
Unit meaning big family, yeah.
Meaning the big box. It's the chassis and then the box that's on top of it and all the equipment that goes in it. There was $155,000 for that in the financial recovery plan, and it's estimated it'll be about $149,000, so a little bit under. And then, there was also a dump truck that was almost $75,000. There was only $55,000 in the general fund in the financial recovery plan for the purchase of that truck, but in order to make sure that it can be used for additional items and be more heavy duty, they needed a heavier dump truck, and so the safety service director can justify that part of that time it will be used on the streets and for the water, doing water maintenance, and so some of that money is coming from the balance of that money is coming from the permissive tax fund. So, $55,000 will come from the general fund and then the balance from the permissive tax fund. All three of these are lease purchase, and so they do need to come to the commission for approval because it is long-term debt, but I don't think the terms of the financing have been, I don't think that's all been finalized yet, and I will just defer that to April and Anna Mary when you get to that portion. So, you have any questions on those three purchases? I think they can clarify that a little later on. I had hoped to come to you to tell you that we had passed a new retiree benefit program. That did not happen. There has been many, many, many meetings back and forth to try to get this resolved, and we thought we had an understanding. There was some last-minute details that prevented people from feeling comfortable on council. It would be nice. It was a very long discussion, and in the end, it ultimately did not pass, and so it has been put back into the committee of hold, of which I am chair by being president of council. So, we do have a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday, hopefully to iron out the details. If we can get this done, ironing out all the details and it stays within the substance of what was initially agreed upon, it will save a considerable amount of money. As I said, I had hoped to be able to report to you that it had passed, but I'm just the messenger. And then, I think there'll be more details on that later, so I just wanted to set the plate for that so that you could understand what we were doing on council. And if you have any questions other than that, or any other questions of what's going on on council, I'd be happy to try to answer those. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, that's all. We could move ahead, keep moving about this, and Jeff, I'm happy to see Mr. Vitale has been able to join us. We went ahead and altered the agenda, but you want to...
I apologize for...
No worries. Happy you're here safe.
The weather got a little dicey between here and Columbus.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Why don't we go ahead and report on the financial supervisor and go through those informations, and then we'll have your presentation. And this equipment is here for your use if you want to do that.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just going to...
Okay, very good. All right.
Okay, so in front of you is the normal packet, and there's a few extra attachments for one. We'll just go down the list in order. So, I'm on attachment one, which is the monthly fund balances that you would have. The first page, first two pages show you all the monthly balances for each fund, January through October, because that's the last month that's been reconciled. Today is the last day of November, so until they reconcile the books, it's not fair to present that information yet. As you can see, the only negative fund still is the general fund, and that has come down. We've gotten our last property taxes and stuff like that. It will increase before year-end. They're still getting revenues and such, but we have three pays in December. So, right now, we're projecting, I talked with the city auditor, and we looked at what November was at the beginning of this week, and then looking at December, what expected expenditures or revenues would be. We are going to be within the recovery plan for expenditures, and we'll talk more about that going forward. It should be what the recovery plan stated, maybe less, we'll see, but right now, we're projecting it'll stay within the recovery plan items in total. Does that make sense? Attachment B is the revenues. Of course, the general fund is at the top, and at the end of October, we're at $20.3 million, and the recovery plan had $22.2. Right now, in total, that is above target. Actually, talked with the city treasurer's office yesterday, and they gave us the numbers as of yesterday for income tax, and they're actually going to be at $17.0 million at the end of November, which is only around $100,000 away from what the recovery plan had stated, and they will surpass that more than likely. They will get more than $100,000 in December. So, that will go over target. With that being said, they will meet, if not go over, the estimated amount for revenues, which is a good thing to be over as we look at things. So, the general fund is looking good. Any questions on the general fund?
Recovery plan estimates here, is that for the full year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Any others? The other funds that are in the recovery plan are listed here as well. The target at the end of October would be 83.3%, and as you can see, all of them are over that target amount, are right on target, so we project that they should stay that way going through the end of December. So, there's no worries as of right now with those funds. Any questions on the revenues? Sorry. Okay. The expenditures are attachment C, and you can go through here, and I can hit some of the highlights. The big thing with this is, like I already talked about, we've looked at November, where they were at the beginning of the week. We went and looked at what December's expenditures will be for the general fund, because that's more of the worry fund, to see if we would be below what the recovery plan has right now, and we feel that it will be based on what we're estimating for really December, because I've seen November. It's not presented. There are some departments that are over and some are under, but in total, before the end of the year, it will be within the confines of the recovery plan. So, the city will have to do some appropriation changes to move monies between departments, but not increase appropriations overall for the general fund, which is what I'm more worried about right now. There are a few departments that we will be looking at to make sure that we have appropriate estimates going forward into '18. There are a couple of departments that were exceeding, and we're not quite sure what exactly, based on what the estimates were versus what the actuals are, where the difference is until the year-end, and then we can compare better year-end numbers against a full-year recovery plan. Does that make sense? But after talking and looking at things, we feel fairly confident that it's going to be within the recovery plan items unless something out of the ordinary would happen, so...
When do you expect FY '18 forecast to be ready?
We won't do that until after the city has closed out '17.
Okay.
So, we're probably looking, probably March. That will give us time, because the way the recovery plan works is we'll go back and we'll update '17. Instead of being forecasted, it'll show actual numbers so that you know what the true balance was at the end of the year, and then we'll take into consideration any of the things that we saw as we were going through '17 that, you know, we may not have thought about, or the city changes. And I'll talk a little bit about that, because healthcare is an issue as well as retirees. So, we want to give the city time to close out '17. We'll update that, and then we'll work with the city as to what they want to incorporate, because not only will we have to amend '18, but then we'll have to add another year of forecast. They have to have five years of forecast.
And will council need to pass that?
Yes, so...
Update that each year?
Right.
I know we'll have to do the appropriations change.
The recovery plan has to be updated at least once annually. What I am going to advise, and we've kind of already talked about this with the city auditor, is the city approved 2018 permanent appropriations based on what is in the current recovery plan, and then as we close out year-end, then we can amend things. We know they're going to have to be changes, but it doesn't have to be perfect at the beginning of the year, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. I must say, just as a comment, that we've done less appropriation changes this year than we've ever done, so, just as an observation. It would seem to me like every month, we were doing some kind of appropriation changes, and that's just not happening, so people are paying attention.
Good. Any other questions on expenditures?
Can you ask what the D-R-E-T-A-C non-debtment is?
Three-TAC.
Three-TAC?
Yes, three-TAC.
The page, there's pages at the bottom.
Five.
It's the withholders from the county. Yeah, it's withholding off of the tax settlement from the county, so they have to post that as an expenditure.
Okay.
That's been paid in full.
So, where they've appropriated the $11,000, they've only spent six. Second half settlements already occurred. There'll be nothing more coming out, so that leaves monies that can be moved to other department.
So, just like a summary, so you expect revenues to be at least in line with expectations, if not exceed, and then expenditures to be in line with what the original budget was?
Correct.
So, we should hopefully be in a little better shape than we thought?
Yes.
That's a very good summary.
Yeah.
I'd like to just point out a couple of things. I think it's clear, and forgive me if you said this and I didn't recognize it, but a lot of these line items are improving substantially.
Yes.
Right? Yeah, okay.
And if you'll recall, that's, a lot of that is because Anna Mary had said, you know, we had a lot of back payments and things that were paid upfront, so it should be. Now, when we move into '18, everything should be caught up, and so everything should track, you know, accordingly to the percentages each month.
Great.
Unless, of course, we have some of the one-time payments, you know, like a property insurance, that type of thing that you pay upfront.
Yeah, yeah, great.
And I assume we're meeting all of our obligations for paying everybody on time and doing everything?
We are. That we are aware of.
Yeah. We asked that question, and Marcus, you can, we are paying people on time.
Yeah, I would, I think, unless I'm mistaken here, that every substantial overage, overspend from last time, which was through August, has come down considerably, except for a couple of small ones which are just kind of flat. It's very encouraging.
Excuse me, if there's somebody from the state auditors or somebody that's got a car parked out in back there trying to put a tent up in a parking lot.
Way in the back? Well, I have my car parked.
I, it could be. I'm not sure. She just come in and said, "They're trying to put a tent up." We don't want to hold putting a tent up.
All right.
I'll get blamed for that.
Can we get somebody to move it for you? Would you trust somebody to move it for you?
I said that's Marcus.
It's Marcus.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I was parked by three other cars, so, okay.
Okay, all right. Okay. The next attachment is attachment D. That's the reconciliation. Again, we're just showing you these. This lists all their bank statements, and then it shows you the reconciling items like outstanding checks, deposits not posted yet because of timing, return checks, things like that. We are working with them on the reconciling items. We actually met with the treasurer's office yesterday. We're going over some of the issues that they were seeing, and that's something we'll be working on in the next two months with them. Attach, any questions on that, sorry. Attachment E, this was one of the requests, I believe, from one of the commission members. The request was to see the 2016 actual expenses for healthcare insurance costs, what was forecasted for 2017, and then what was actual, which the best information in total was through October, so that's 10 payments, and that's what's presented on the sheet, by department within the general fund, and then the O2 fund that pays for health insurance, and then Fund 50. Fund 50 is the only fund on here that is not in the recovery plan, so there's no estimate or forecasted number there because it was not a part of the recovery plan, so I don't know what the estimate was. That's not something we looked at with the city before that was approved. The other thing, there's some asterisks that go with the actual for '17. They had an option to, I guess it's more of a premium-type insurance they could take. If the employee chose to do that, they did have to put in monies of their own for that, so they had a cost back, so I guess they, you know...
Call it buy-up plan, where they could buy up to a more, a premium plan, and they had to pay the difference.
They had to pay the difference. So, those departments with asterisks, those are departments that had those. So, it's a reversal of expenditure, so it's monies that's coming out of their check and back into the expenditure line item. So, we reduced the cost like they showed, so you see the total cost minus what they had to pay. Does that make sense? I wanted to show you a true cost to the city, not a cost of just the insurance, so you had a better picture of what they were actually paying. Through 10 months, you can see that, you know, they're at 1.7, well, for the general fund, 1.7 million against a whole year forecasted of 2.17 million. And then last, in 2016, for the general fund, it cost them 2.66 million in actual, so even the recovery plan was less than that.
Is there any reason to suspect that this will be rather straight-line through the end of the year?
Oh, through the end of the year?
Well, it fluctuates a little bit because you bring people off, people...
So, these aren't, these aren't, this isn't medical utilization?
No, it's the premiums.
It's premiums.
Yes, thank you.
Paid for the city towards...
By the city.
By the city towards...
For the employees, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't change based on utilization?
No, because they are not...
Just on employment?
Right. They're not self-insured, so they just pay a premium.
So, one could imagine that this will come in even below the forecasted? Or was it, is this an up-to-date forecast, or is this a beginning-of-the-year forecast?
This is the beginning of the year. The forecasted amount is in compliance with the numbers that are in the recovery plan.
So, straightlining this, you'd get to 2,500,000 about, right?
Right.
Which is a fair amount, meaningfully below the 2,174. Okay. Anything could happen. I get it, but...
But as they say, but wait, there's more.
Oh, okay.
Well, they did just hire new police officers, and they just did that yesterday, sworn, and then yesterday they've been lacking, so that would increase it, but we're only talking a month or two, so...
Yeah, okay.
Were those additional police officers or replacing people that left?
That's replacement, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good question, thank you. Is there any other questions since this was a request on this information?
Sorry, forgive me.
No, you're fine.
I was trying to digest this. You mentioned the Fund O2 and the Fund 50. Would you mind explaining those once more?
Oh, Fund 2 is the street fund. That is a recovery plan fund because it was one of the ones in the fiscal analysis report we did that was one of the funds that was projected negative or hit one of the emergency requirements. So, when the recovery plan was done, you'll see Fund 2 in there.
Is that a, an insurance cost issue? Healthcare insurance?
Yeah, well, there's employees paid out of the street fund because they do work for the street fund, so that's allowable. So, their employee benefits can also come out of Fund 2 as well.
I see, okay.
And the same thing for the water fund. Now, it's not a recovery plan because it was not a fiscal analysis issue.
Yeah, okay.
So, those people are all water-use employees, so their benefits can also come out of that fund.
But even still, year-to-date is well below the pace to even reach 2016 actual on the water fund.
Yeah, but the expenses weren't included in the budget, is that what you're saying? Like, there wasn't a forecast expense for the water fund?
Well, they did for their appropriations, for their budgets for the city, but the recovery plan does not have it because it's not a fiscal...
Yeah, it didn't meet, that fund was not a fund that met the definition for fiscal emergency, and so since it's not part of the recovery plan, it's not a fund that this financial supervisor, we are detailing out like we are the general fund.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure we didn't have a $200,000 expense.
Sitting out there, right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
No, that's very helpful.
I'll do this. Okay, one of the other items on there is the budget development for '18. As we had talked before, we had met with the department heads and looked at their budgets and requests going into '18. As April has already stated, we're requesting that they use the '18 recovery plan as the appropriations until we can do some, looking at amendments for a full appropriation in March with the needs of the city going forward, plus by that time, we should know what the health insurance is, and we can see what the closeout is for 2017 as well. So, we do have those. We're looking at the needs versus wants and making sure that we take care of items that need to be. Any questions on that?
Okay, I'm going to move forward to Section B under report of financial supervisor and the recovery plan items. Number one, the review of the 911...
Number one, the review of the 911 dispatcher's department. There's been no movement on that as of yet, and the city can decide if that's something they still want to look into when they update the recovery plan in eighteen. The focus lately has been on the retirees' healthcare and the employees' healthcare. So under Item Two, I have given you a copy and a summary of the ordinance that was presented at the council meeting the other night that Ms. Lakes referred to, and I'm not gonna go over all of this. I just wanted to provide it to the commission members for informational purposes, so that you are aware that, yes, the city is looking into this, they're looking to make changes. What this ordinance would do would change the dollar amount by which the retirees would receive some benefit, and it would also cap it. Whereas, if you'll recall, in past meetings, I have said that retirees' healthcare is a moving target. This would cap the dollar amount and would make it very, much more manageable for the city, if they so chose to do that. But again, that's a council decision, and Ms. Lakes elaborated that, you know, they'll be taking more action and looking into that. Again, this is just informational purposes, so that you are aware.
What are the issues that the council has with it? And I haven't seen this yet, so I don't know what, know what it says, but...
I think there were, the devil is always in the details, and so they asked questions that, that weren't included in the ordinance, that weren't included in the plan that people kind of took for granted. One of them was, for instance, was, letters would be mailed out to all of the people who are currently on the plan, letting them know of the changes, and that you would have, that current people would have to apply, and they would have to apply, reapply every year, as they do right now with the Millennium Plan, they have to submit it to benevolations. That was out of the suggestion of one of the current recipients of the plan, who was on this committee, who was trying to work this, these issues out. Some of the questions were, who, who was gonna be responsible for that? It was not clearly delineated in the, in the ordinance. It's just, again, the devil in the details. The ordinance said that if you missed, once you were, so, you had to apply by the end of March of 2018, and if you hadn't applied by the end of March in 2018, the door was closed, that was it, nobody else could get in. There are, there may be a couple of people that I'm aware of in the city who would still, who are still working for the city, who would still qualify for this, and so we had to make accommodations for those. That was not clearly delineated of those people, once they did retire, how did they get in if it's closed? And then there was a question of, if somebody misses it, why are they out for good? Like, if you didn't send in your application, for some reason, the question was raised, what if I'm a little old lady and I had a hip replacement, and I'm in rehab somewhere, and I don't get my mail? If I don't have it in by the end of January, then I'm out for the rest of my life, and that didn't seem fair. So it's all, I think it's in the details.
Okay. But the fundamentals of...
Yes, just kind of the nitty-gritty details. You know, the Millennium Plan and the, is, is an unknown, and so if there's, if there's an amount that we can cap, and we know that that's the most it's gonna be, it's something that we can plan on in the future, and that was the hope. And there's, Jim Stitt, the auditor, has been working a long, long, long time on this. And again, as I said, the devil's always in the details, but hopefully we can get this worked out. We're having a committee on the whole meeting. We wanted to get it done as soon as we could, to make, like I said, we had hoped, I had hoped I could come to you and say that it was all resolved, but we are gonna be meeting Monday night, so hopefully we can hammer out some of those details. We do have two more council meetings in December. I don't know whether we can get it done in time, and an ordinance done, and have everybody look at it and give it its blessing, but that's the goal, is to have it done before the end of the year. Mayor, is that a fair, is that a fair analysis of...
I can't comment. I'm on a recipient, so somebody will run to Columbus on me.
I'm sorry, I had to be acting mayor during the, which was the proper thing to do, I want to, kudos to him. He, the mayor sent me a letter asking me to be acting mayor during the consideration of those three ordinances, so that he wouldn't be involved in it, since he's a recipient. And so I did take the chair as acting mayor, and somebody else ran the meeting during the discussion, so...
And one other thing I want to add to that is, the mayor had asked me about a comment that had come up on the retirees' healthcare, as to whether or not the city could enter into an actual contract with those retirees. It is not up to this commission or us as financial supervisor to approve that. That would be, you know, something that council would have to get a legal opinion through their own legal law director as to how to proceed, just like we don't, the commission does not approve, you know, contracts with police and fire. So I just wanted to make that, that's something that council so chooses, that will be left up to council and, and the law director how to proceed with that.
Now, now I have to comment. So the retirees have been told, it's illegal for the city to enter into a contract with them, and if that's not...
I, I can't opine, by the way, because I'm, I'm not legal.
I understand, but, but I mean...
But I, I can't, this commission and the auditor state as financial supervisor, we, we can't authorize or approve those contracts, if you so entered into one.
So see there, I'm gonna talk about it, so if anybody wants to run to Columbus, I'll give you the directions.
Can I interrupt just one?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Administratively, there are two cars that need to be moved, and the one is a van, and its license is AF eight-four EN, if that is a vehicle.
What's the other one?
I think it's mine.
Oh, okay.
It's, the other one is three-two-dash-eight-one-nine.
That's a state license card.
Yeah, which probably, so, so thankfully someone is taking care of that one, but I'm sorry, Mayor Ted.
So this is really a touchy subject, and to be honest with you, they didn't get paid for a long time, and they don't trust. So the, the idea of a contract was mentioned, and they were told...
Who's "they"?
The retirees.
The retirees were told that the state auditor and the commission wouldn't permit that. So here we are, to the point where they were told something, and I did say I would look into it, so I went to the financial supervisor and asked her. So now we find out that is not true. So we're back to square one on trying to get this resolved. It can be resolved, but we have to separate the issues and the concerns that they have. So that is a very clear message, and I appreciate that.
And where would we need to get that opinion? Our, our local law director?
Your, your law director, the city's law director.
But as far as the state's, state auditor's concerned, I hate to keep...
It's okay.
But that's who I go to, that's who...
That's what we're here for.
So that's not a requirement or an elimination by this commission or the state auditors, am I correct in saying that?
So you would not be involved.
That's correct.
All right.
I mean, anything that the city does, that is solely a, the city, city council's decision. That, that's yours decision. What our job is, is only to look at the numbers, and to look at the recovery plan and make sure that, you know, you made...
So you didn't have, you don't have to approve a contract, you just need to approve the financial impacts of that contract?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, I think I could clarify a little bit, and I'm agreeing with what's being said here, that inasmuch as that contract will then be folded into what the city's financial position is and the recovery plan, then it comes before this commission, and...
For approval.
And it has to be a part of what is approved by this commission. But the actual entry into the contract or existence of the contract, that's not something of this commission authorized.
And, and I guess the concept would be, if it reduces the city obligation by $350,000 a year, which would decrease every year due to the death of us old people, it would, it would, it would constantly go down, because it could not be increased. So as far as the...
And that would be something that, that the auditors would look at in factoring in the success of the potential recovery plan, or the recovery plan as it's amended by the, the existence of this contract. It's just that what, what they're trying to tell you is, they don't approve whether you do the contract or not. Once you do it, they evaluate its impact on the plan.
And so it's the same as the ordinance. If we pass the ordinance, that they would evaluate the financial impact of that ordinance or a contract. That's all that you got involved in.
I certainly don't speak for them, but I watched that meeting in horror. So if, so if, if it would speed the process up, to have the contract, the contract would then come here, or the plan would come here?
It would just be incorporated into the updated recovery plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, the commission would not approve the, the contract, just the same as police or fire, anything.
Because it would be, I think, a $350,000 reduction in, in, in the cost of the city, which is, and like I said, it's, it would help the, speed the process along. It's my personal thought, so I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mark, did we have the, was there an analysis of future, I'm a little lost for the word?
You're talking actuarial study.
An actuarial study. Has that come back yet? I thought we had asked for that, right?
Yeah, we asked for it, there's still no reply.
Okay, I knew we had asked for that actuarial study to be done.
We requested it again two days ago, and I have heard...
Thank you for giving us the bad news.
Who is, who's work, is some, you think someone's working on it?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be...
And he, he's being, he is who? I mean, what, I don't care about a name, but is it a...
It's a firm.
A firm?
Yes. Okay, the second thing that I have in the packet, and again, this is just informational purposes, but I've given you information that the city received regarding their healthcare, things I'm going to point out, I've tried to highlight, but if you look at the Humana renewal, and flip to, probably best if you flip to the third page back, and you'll see the very first line looks like this. So here, yes, Ms. Lakes, it's this page that looks like this, Mr. Shepherd. So the bad news is that the quote that the city has received is a 25% increase in healthcare from last year. So if you look at what I have on this third page, look over to the far right, the estimated annual premium, you'll see the increase, a $583,000 increase. The city has not made any decisions yet as to what they're going to do, but basically what happens is, if, if you kind of look back at the information that Anna Mary gave you, all the money that they saved in seventeen from switching now gets eaten up. So that is unfortunate. They do have some options, but just so that you are aware, you know, healthcare goes out to, you know, to get a quote, and you will see at the bottom of that page, decline to quote, and there are four other companies that declined to quote, and why they declined.
So this, if the, let me try to understand it, so this is based on what 2017 coverage was, right?
Correct.
And just rolling that forward, that does not reflect what they're trying to do here?
Right. This is, okay, these are two separate things. So the benefit that is given to the retirees is completely separate from this. This is just healthcare insurance for current employees.
Okay.
And again, you know, it, it shows the increase from what they, if they stick with the same type of plan they have now, that increase would be the 583. They, the city has some decisions to make, as to, you know, there are a couple different, you know, ways they can go, as to what type of plan, and, you know, what to, to offer employees from there. Those decisions have not been made. They are, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lakes, December fifteenth, maybe?
We just got this information Tuesday night.
Right, but I think a decision has to be made by the middle of December?
Yes.
Does this include people that are, like, union, where you can't...
Yes.
Okay, and then it's everybody?
Yes, all current employees, who are covered by the plans.
So when we were in our projection, we had no increase?
Right, right.
So that was all of our concern?
Right. Because, because we wanted to wait until we had this, so I'm certainly glad they didn't build it like a ten, thirteen, fifteen, I mean, you know, you never know, but they're, the bottom line is, it's gonna go up, depending. But again, if you look at what they paid in sixteen compared to, you know, this, it's only, I say only, but every little bit hurts. It's a hundred thousand some dollar difference, but, you know, it just, the savings that they received in seventeen will be gone. So, yeah, so, so that is, is the concern, and that's why, you know, we will have to, whatever decision the city makes will be incorporated into an updated recovery plan at the, you know, first part of eighteen. So I just wanted to give you that, to provide, provide that to you.
We were told at the meeting that for every dollar that the city paid, Humana paid out a dollar fifty-six.
Year-to-date, yeah, that's...
Yeah, it's on the front page.
That works.
Is employee contribution figured into any of this?
That is, I don't have that information, because it'll, it'll, no, it's a pay, it's based on what they currently have now, if they just stick with the same thing. So again, depending on what plans the city would want to offer, and if the employee wanted, let's say that the city offered Package A, and employee wanted Package B, you know, there'll be a difference that, you know, the employee could possibly have to cover, just like they currently do.
Do you, I forget, I don't have my council packet with me. Do you remember how many employees bought up? For some reason, twenty-three stuck in my mind.
Yeah, it's probably anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two, and again, with turnover...
That may go up and down. So out of the, how many employees? Two hundred employees, twenty-three bought up?
Eligible for insurance, one hundred eighty-nine.
Hundred eighty-nine eligible for insurance, twenty-three bought up. Bought the higher, bought up the higher plan, and they pay the difference.
So I'm not asking about buying up and paying more, I'm just asking about paying more in the beginning.
This would be, this would be just straight cost to the city with no, this does not include anything with the employees paying anything. That would just be what the invoice would be coming into them to pay. Does that make sense?
Discussions are taking place.
Yeah, I'd be interested next time, or whenever you guys, how we shrink that, obviously. Is there a highly doubtful plan that's offered?
Not yet.
Looking at that.
Yes, we're looking at several different options. We were in executive session at the end of council meeting Tuesday night to go over these and to look at some of these, because it does involve contracts, and whether or not contracts are reopened, and they're, the city's currently in contract negotiations with the police department, so we went into executive session for the purpose of, I'll make that very clear, went into executive session for the purpose of discussing union contracts with the police department, and some of the options that might be available now that we have this information.
I assume Haran offered us some recommendations as to how to decrease that increase?
If you look at the packet, they have, they have several different options, so as you go back further in the plan, back further in the packet, they have several different options. So like, there's an alternate plan design, number one, alternate plan design, number two. I think the very last page is an HSA, which the city has never offered before, and, and that gives you the numbers of employees, too, at the top, where at the very top of each page, on the upper left-hand side, like, there are twenty-one singles, twelve is the employee plus a spouse, so those are the numbers of the different insurance plans. But then as you go back on the pages, those are the different alternates that Haran offered. We were also told that if we came up with something, like if we wanted to come up with some other kind of a plan, different out-of-pocket expenses, or that they would give us a quote on anything that we wanted to look at.
You know, the challenge, of course, is if it's free, you spend more of it.
And that's why, if there's no, if you don't have deductibles, and you don't have to pay to go to an emergency room, or whatever, it's easier to do that than if you have to think about, I have to pay my own money to go.
And the other challenge, of course, is that changing would be a takeaway from our employees, so it's a...
The sad part about this is, there's a couple reasons why it went up, and nobody's gonna talk about it. It's just not right to talk about it, so there's a couple reasons...
You mean, specific people?
I, I can leave it at that.
Yeah, well, of course, it's not...
But that, that, and that's not fair to talk about, but one of the things that we were told in a meeting is, once you change, we were with Blue Cross and Blue Shield for forty-five years, or whatever it was, and, and we changed and went to Humana. And when I asked the broker, why aren't we getting bids, or something like that, and they said, normally, once you change the carrier, the next year you open it up for bids, the ones that you didn't take won't bid.
Oh, that's interesting.
For, for a lot of reasons, so I don't know whether that's the reason or not, I'm just saying that that was part of the discussions we had.
The only way to bring down healthcare is to reduce utilization. I mean, we saw this year, you get the best deal in the world, and healthcare utilization... I mean, we saw this year, you get the best deal in the world, and healthcare utilization is high, then you pay for it in premiums next year. And it's a challenge to get... I mean, speaking from experience, to get people who have forever enjoyed health coverage without thinking of it as their own money to spend wisely. You know, spend it as they would if it were their own money, and it's a real challenging I think clearly, if everybody was spending money regardless of whether it was their own or the city's, we wouldn't be spending as much. But how do you get from here to there is the real challenge.
And we do have contracts that we... They're looking at whether we have reopeners in the contracts or...
Yeah.
Or whether... At the different options that are available to folks, you know. Like I said, we've never offered a health... An HSA, which might be attractive to some people who don't utilize a lot, but...
But it's not nearly as attractive as not paying anything.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
You know, full coverage with no premium. So, it's a difficult situation.
Right.
And I'll be honest with you, I think... I think everybody knows that.
Yeah.
The employees, everybody knows that. It's trying to get through the weeds to find a solution.
Right.
And therein is the trick. It's going to get solved one way or the other, but how do we reach that conclusion? How do we get to that point? Because there's nobody that works for the city that doesn't understand that.
Right.
There's nobody that works for the city hasn't been told, you're the only one to get it. They all know that. The trick is getting through that weeds and coming up with a solution. It's going to happen, because the contracts are up next year. It's going to happen, but how does everybody negotiate to the benefit of both sides? That's the art of the deal, and that's the problem we've got to work through. It'll get done. It may not be to everybody's liking or as fast as everybody would like, but it will get accomplished.
Well, we're glad to have the information. I'll say that. It wasn't what perhaps you wanted to see, but now we can... And that's good to have actual...
And interestingly, just on the first page, at the bottom, it says, for benchmarking purposes, only 10.9% of single plans and 8.7% of family medical premiums were 100% paid for by their employer in 2017, so... Benchmarking is certainly, you know...
Yeah, that's helpful.
Who's in that benchmark?
It's from the State Employee Relations Board, so I'm assuming that this is...
Public employees.
Public employees. Serve benchmarking. Serve State Employee Relations Board.
But no private companies, right?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, the last thing that I wanted to mention is I wanted to go back to Ms. Lake's comment concerning the ordinances that the city had passed for the purchases of three different vehicles. Even though we do not have the actual lease purchase agreements at this point in time, I would like to ask the commission to take action to approve allowing the city to go ahead and sign those as long as they are within the confines of the recovery plan, of which Anna Mary and I would ensure. And the reason why I'm asking for that is because that I know that on the ambulance, the paramedic unit, I believe, I believe the cost goes up after December 1st.
It has to be in by...
Today. So, and I apologize, I was not aware that that timing was on there, but I think it's imperative that the city be able to take advantage of a lower cost, and I wouldn't want to...
So, the difference, the delta, was what? Was it 80 and 55? Was it 20?
No, the ambulance was...
I'm sorry, it was 155 and 180 or whatever it was?
It's 140.
There was $155,000 in the general fund that was appropriated, or that was allowed in the financial recovery plan, and this comes in at 149.
For the paramedic unit. And for the police cruiser?
The police cruiser, there was... I think there was $50,000 in the plan for that, and it came in at 45,000, and it came in at 40,783. And the truck is 74,812. $55,000 of that would come from the general fund, which is in the financial recovery plan, and $19,812 would come out of the permissive tax fund, which is not... Is that part of the financial recovery plan? It is not.
And we can do that?
Yes, the recovery plan had a... The amounts that she stated, with a five-year loan at least, around 4%.
Yeah, around 4%.
That was built into the recovery plan, so the 55,000 for the dump truck can be paid, but the rest of that has to come from, including interest. The rest has to come from the permissive motor vehicle tax, which was stated in the ordinance. So, both funds are stated in that ordinance. So, 55 for general, the 19 for the permissive. So, the other two ordinances date the general fund, because they were... That's where they're paid from.
So, the ambulance and the police were budgeted for, and they're within the budget. The truck is...
And the financial recovery.
Sure. The truck is over, but we can do that.
Correct. Well, we knew the truck... We knew the truck was going to be more, but we knew that it was going to be split between some other funds. We knew what portion the general fund could cover.
Okay.
Is there a bargain purchase option for the lease, so we pretty much own it once the lease is over?
So, the motion you need is to...
I move.
Do we have a second to the motion?
To approve the interim lease purchases.
To approve the interim lease purchases.
One second.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed unanimously to...
Do you need this packet?
First lease purchases. We're going to need to have another motion as well in terms of dealing with the end of the year to give the financial supervisors the authority to approve the 2018 appropriations in compliance with the recovery plan. This will just get them over the hurdle of the end of the year, and we do this with commissions as it goes. So, if someone would like to move that motion...
I'm sorry, I don't...
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Do you want to elaborate?
Is this the... Go ahead.
So, it's just the commission, okay, because you, as the commission body, have to approve the appropriations at the beginning of the year to make sure they're in compliance with the recovery plan. So, that would require another meeting. But you can, instead of doing that, the commission can vote to grant authority to financial supervisor to review the appropriations the city has put in place to ensure they are in compliance with what is in the recovery plan, which is what I talked about earlier. So, that's what Ms. Snagger is talking about.
And that's until the new budget is done in March.
Correct.
Correct. If they do not... If we do not have something passed, which would be by council and the commission, before January 1st, technically, they cannot spend.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we could have one more meeting if we don't do this motion, but that can get tricky, and...
Are we planning on having a December meeting?
Not if not... We might have to with the debt situation.
Well, not by... Not by already granting them the approval to enter into those lease purchases, and then if authority is given to the financial supervisor to approve those appropriations, then no, there won't be a need for a December meeting.
And forgive me, the appropriations, I could pretend I know what we're talking about, but I don't quite...
It's the expenditure budget.
Yeah.
And those have to...
Not for all of '18.
Well, we would have the city pass permanent appropriations, which do cover all of '18, but they would only... We would only allow them to pass the appropriations based what is in the recovery plan right now for '18.
Okay.
And then the process, like I said, is we'll help this... Once the city closes out '17, we'll adjust the recovery plan to reflect the actual numbers for '17. We know what the ending balance is. And then if there are changes that they need to make for the appropriations within the recovery plan, they'll do that after that. So, it'll be like March, probably, that they would update the recovery plan.
Okay.
And then the appropriations would not be changed or go into effect until this commission approved that updated recovery plan. So, basically, what I'm saying is, 18 appropriations will match what is in the 18 column on the recovery plan currently for the general fund and the other funds.
How does the medical... Projected medical increase at this point in time impact that?
That's a good question. It will impact it, and that's why the city will have to do an updated recovery plan and could do that in March. So, by passing those appropriations in December to cover 18, based on what we have right now, it doesn't take into account any decision that they will make, but when they update the recovery plan in March, it will, because they're not going to go through... The appropriations will be for a whole year, so there's plenty. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be good, since it's only a few months.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'll move.
Very good. Is there a second to the motion? Mayor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, very good. All right. We've covered your materials. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, we've covered the retirees and employees' health insurance. An update on 911. There's been some changes. Cincinnati Bell is now getting out of it, the equipment, so this will take place in '19, sometime in '19. And so, I talked to Chief Wallace from Amberly, who stays right in the middle of it. There are some discussions. For example, we... Don't hold me to these figures. I believe our revenue from 911 calls on phone bills is at $5,000 a month, I believe. That's going to double. They're going to double that coming in, and that would put us, you know, up in a hundred some thousand dollars. So, if the decision comes down to keep that 911, this money can be used to purchase whatever equipment we have that is required. Now, there's still discussions going on about doing away with 911. We'd have to have somebody down there to answer the phone, do the records, do all that. So, it's influx, and what this change is going to be, it could be the death knell of our 911 system, or the increased revenue that the state's going to put through can improve that. So, it's ongoing. Chief Wallace has his own PSAP, so he's going to be... He's protective of that, so he's exploring with all the options with the Hamilton County Communication Supervisor and the representative from Cincinnati Bell. So, it's an ongoing target. It could improve some areas, and then again, it may not. If it does not, it could be the decision will be made for us. But all this would do was send our 911 calls to county, which will lose that revenue coming in, and then the county will just transfer them to us. So, you know, it's not even a push. So, there's all kinds of options. What I'm hoping, the goal really is, is by... I'm hoping May of '18 to have a clearer picture, that something that we can come and present to council and this commission on what the cost would be. And, you know, there's hidden costs and everything. So, that's the goal, is to have it completed by May. The timeline for May is, by the time that rolls around, then we should be clear what the new vendor's going to be for the system. The other two things is, I've told you before, it's an update. We're hoping, from what I understand, I met with the attorney for Paycor yesterday. They're looking for a groundbreaking for the new Paycor facility in March, would, like I said, would be a large increase, and I think it'll be an additional 1,200 employees up there, plus a building, plus a garage, which is a $60 million project. We are also, as you... If you drive by over there, everybody's wondering where that building went. The Zumbio building is now down. They're breaking up the concrete and backfilling. Terex's original plan was to put in 100,000 square foot office building up against the... Run parallel to 562. We're working on the idea of maybe another couple of users in there. I don't want to get into detail who, but we're looking for another couple of users to go in there, that something that would take care of the evening part of it and also the 100,000 square foot, you know, employees in the office building there. So, that's moving along, and we're waiting for that. I've had some discussions with... Which I do as often as I can on the planning card. That's not dead. It's still not dead. And so, I'm constantly meeting with different people and talking to different people, trying to get that resolved. I think, hopefully, there'll be some news on that in the next couple of weeks. I can't guarantee that. So, it's moving along, sometimes not as fast as people would like, but it is moving along.
It's not FC Cincinnati.
No, and you know that's... I met with a couple of developers over there the other day, and it's... I better not say. It's funny. It's really funny. I mean, there's some real negotiating going on, and it doesn't concern me, so...
Sure.
I'd like to invite Mr. Vitale to come forward. Oh, I'm sorry.
May I ask a... Just a quick question, going back to the discussion on 911. Do we have any idea of what possible cost savings would be at this point if we were to go with the county and...
You know, really good question. It's like anything else. Most of our costs in a unit like that is employee cost as anywhere else. So, if we transfer... That's where we're going to be looking at the options. If we just transfer 911 calls to the county, and then they transfer them to us, there's no savings. It will have to be manned. So, if they... If we transfer the calls and they do the dispatching, there's an additional cost. So, that's one of the things we have to look at. What are all the options? If we just transfer the calls over and they send them back, that's one option. If we transfer the calls over to them and they do the dispatching, that's another option. And so, each one will depend on the cost. If our employee costs are the main issues, we're going to have to have somebody down there anyway. So, that was the problem before, and it's still the problem today. Like I said before, we've had good relationships with the new superintendent of the Hamilton County system, and as always, Joe Geer knows him. Joe knows everybody, but he knows this guy, he had a relationship with him past from another place, and so, there's good communications going there. He's very cooperative, will take us in a minute, but he's not here to bulldoze anybody. So, those are all positives. How it's going to turn out, I'm not sure. If the county and them would ever go together, and the city of Cincinnati, we're gone, and we understand that. It's this interim. How's the best way to do it? Is the cost we're paying worth it to the citizens? So, there's a lot of pro and con. I can tell you this, hopefully, we'll have it in bores that we can come to council and come to this commission and say, is this is what it's going to cost us? And lay it out, and this is what the service we're going to get, or we're not going to get. So, everybody can look at it and say, it's worth the cost, or no, it's time to go bye-bye. That's the goal.
But some of the options will involve cost savings?
I...
Is that fair to say? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Sure, sure. I understand. Yeah. We want to cut it down.
Would decrease some cost?
And what that cost will be from this... If the state puts that... Passes that through where the cost for the 911 calls is doubled, that will increase it. So, and if we don't... If we don't take a 911, that money will go to the county. So, it's...
And that's an additional five grand per month?
Yeah, that's what it's estimated to be, so...
Is that what we get now?
No, it's... It'll be an additional 5,000, so...
Oh, okay.
It was in the inquiry, so I don't know. It was in the inquiry, so, I, I don't know, so, but I mean, we're going to try to make it, put a plan together that we can come forward and say, in May, this is probably the direction it's going to go, and make the recommendations there.
Great, thank you.
That sounds good.
You talked about there, people, they still have to be there to answer phones, even if Hamilton County would do the dispatching, somebody still has to be there to take nine non-emergency calls?
Yeah, and the problem with that is other places who have, who have went to the county, I can tell you, one was Evendale, and when they had a problem, everybody would, the cost was, they would tell people to call the police department, so if the county was busy, thunderstorms or whatever, and they couldn't get through to the county, they'd call the non-emergency and the PD. So, for example, if it was a bad situation, and they couldn't get through to the county, they'll just call 458-4520, and so, you got to have somebody answering. So, there's, there's a lot of, and we'll have the records on how many people call us 911 versus this, and so on, so hopefully, we'll have it ready, and have our chief and Richie Wallace from Amberly to come and kind of lay it out for you, they know the technical answers. I know.
That's a preview of coming attractions.
Hopefully.
Yep, that sounds good. Okay, any other questions? Well, I'd like to invite Mr. Vitale to come forward, if he's joining us, as you recall from our previous meeting, from the State of Ohio's Attorney General's Office, and he's going to brief us on open meetings and public records. We talked about this the very first meeting of this commission, and I was pleased when this offer was made to review this with us, and give us a little bit more detail about this important component, because we do operate as a, as a unique unit, and so, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thanks, Melissa, I feel like the teacher on the first day of school, where you go over all the math that you learned last year, because you need to get yourself reacquainted with the concept. You've seen all of this before, I think all of you have seen all of this before, as a matter of fact, I believe you had a high-tech presentation by my predecessor.
No, we did not.
Oh, she didn't do it?
No, that's the thing, we had an abbreviated one, and we've, the commission was sent the web address to access the Sunshine Manual and such, but it was...
Oh, okay, because there is a version of this, that I was going to use a technology, and we would, there's a quiz, as you will see, when you get into this, and you could vote on your answers, but fortunately, I checked that technology before I brought it, and it didn't work, so, this group didn't happen while I was here, it happened in my office, so it's a little bit better. So, we'll just do it the old-fashioned way with slides, and basically, the Open Meetings Act is an important component of this organization, as well as any public organization, and I'm pretty sure most of you are familiar with it, certainly the mayor and the council members are, have to comply with it. You know, we're going to talk about just four aspects of it, which really pretty much covers it, some definitions, what are the obligations, there's a thing called executive sessions, that I'm sure you've heard of, and what happens if you don't comply. So, the first quiz is, what is a public body? And like any good test taker, you should always pick all of the above, because that's pretty much always the right answer in these kinds of questions. And this, this commission is a public body created by statute, by chapter of the Ohio Revised Code, and therefore, you fit that definition. And a public meeting, you do have to have a majority of the members, you have to have a majority of the members, in order to have an official public meeting. And at a public meeting, here, if you go with C, like normal, you would be, you do have to be present to deliberate and vote, no proxies, no teleconference, no any participation from a different place. So, there's a more detailed, right out of the statute definition of a public body, and a definition of meeting for you, again, straight out of the statute, so you see the key concepts that are bolded right there. Moving on, what is a meeting? Again, must be physically present, there actually are a couple of statutory exemptions for that, there are a couple of public bodies in the State of Ohio that have been permitted to have teleconference participation, you are not one of them, so you do have to be present and gathered simultaneously. Some quick-thinking, oblong lawyer probably tried to do a thing where they had two people talk to one another, then two people talk to one another, and play kind of what you would call the telephone game. That is intentionally trying to subvert the open meetings requirements, and you can't do that. So, that's why an important part of the communications, and I know Melissa is very careful about this, is if, if things need to be conveyed to the entire commission when we're not together, the way to do it is to convey it directly to Melissa, and then let Melissa handle distributing it out, don't be group emailing each other, because that, the reply to all, gets so many people in trouble for so many ways, and in this case, it will get you in trouble with subverting the open meetings requirement. So, where a communication, and it can happen, that the entire commission might need to know something, get it to Melissa, then let her distribute it to the commission. What are our obligations for, as a public body? You have to have notice to the public of the meetings, we must deliberate in open session, and keep minutes. So, looking at the first obligation, the notice requirement, regularly scheduled meetings with prior notice, at an appointed time and place, which is, of course, what we do here, you can have what's called a special meeting that is other than, the definition of special was very clever, it's anything other than a regular meeting, so, you know, it's a little bit hard to put your finger on, but obviously, something that wouldn't have been expected. There can be emergency meetings, and of course, the notice requirements shift depending on what kind of meeting it is. The second obligation is to deliberate in public, must have the meeting in a public place, you can't have the meeting, say, for instance, at a private resort where the public could not come in to attend a meeting. There is often a question of whether the public has a right to speak at the meeting, and that is not required by the Open Meetings Act. It can be given, the public can be given the opportunity to speak, but there is no statutory requirement for the public to speak, just to be able to hear the deliberations and be present. Can the meeting be recorded? Yes, as long as it doesn't disrupt the meeting. As to minutes, it's that, it's not verbatim transcript, it's minutes that accurately reflect the business of the public body. Executive sessions can be had, and that is obviously situations where the public is not present. There are specific rules for convening executive sessions and specific topics which are acceptable. The second slide on that page tells you, gives you the list, again, I just basically copied it out of the statute, of what the topics are for executive session. I'm not really sure that any of these would come up in this particular commission, it does come up, obviously, city council has this come up quite a bit, I'm sure, this committee, or, excuse me, this commission would probably not ever have one, but it is an important component of, of meetings law, so I put it in here. There is a procedure by which executive sessions are convened. The interesting, well, interesting, the important thing about executive sessions is, even though you can properly have them, just kind of FYI, since we're probably not going to do it, even though you can properly have an executive session, you can't make any decisions in executive session, you only deliberate and discuss an executive session, then you must terminate the executive session and reach your decision on whatever topic it was that you discussed, in an open meeting again. You also can't adjourn the meeting in executive session, which I think is more kind of a visual thing, so that the public knows that nothing terminated at the end of the executive session, that we came back before the public to terminate it or make any decision. There doesn't need to be a record of executive session, executive session, no notes are made, and you kind of have to be careful about disclosing confidential information in executive session, because it can actually waive the confidential information, or make public record out of something that isn't a public record. But again, I don't think that we're ever going to, going to be having an executive session, so we don't really need to worry about that. Like any good law, there are penalties for its violation, I've listed all of the things that are possible as terms of potential violations there, that are contained within the statute. The interesting one to me is the fourth, or, excuse me, the fifth one, the second from the last, which is that any action taken that isn't done in public session could be invalidated, so, you know, that's, that's a really strong sanction, even over and above, you know, obviously criminal-type stuff that's on there, probably nothing rises to that level of deviation from the statute. But where it is that you have violated the Open Meetings Act and made some decisions in violation thereof, the decisions are invalidated, so that's a pretty strong sanction that can So, that's a kind of a snapshot of the Open Meetings Act, I don't know if you have any questions? Most of, just kind of, again, FYI, most of the litigation, if you look at the cases and the law in this area, most of the litigation, most of the trouble comes in executive session decisions, and whether you should have gone into executive session, what you did during executive session, and things like that. Most public bodies are familiar with the Open Meetings Act, and know how to comply with it, and it's really not that much trouble to comply with the Open Meetings Act, so certainly you guys have been consistently, even if you didn't, get a detailed presentation at the beginning. Any questions from anyone? Pretty basic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. All right, our next meeting date determination needs to be considered, and we're thinking that if we can give the city time to close out the books, and the financial supervisors will be able to take a look at the numbers, looking at the end of January, possibly January 25th, it's a Thursday, and perhaps go back, we had been meeting at 11:30, we can meet either time, whatever works for personal schedules, we did this one today a little earlier, because it helped a schedule, but...
You say the 25th?
Yeah, would that, does that look like that would work?
I think 11:30, I would appreciate 11:30.
11:30, okay, we can move back to that, does that work for you? Okay, all right, well, let's plan on that for 11:30 AM on January 25th, 2018, and then we'll, then, just to, we won't set the date right now, but we'll then look at the first week in March, if we can, because at that point, we'll have the financial plan that we can then consider and approve. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, we'll be open to that.
So, moved.
Mayor moves, as long as it's a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. No? This meeting is adjourned, thank you, very, very much.